Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call our meeting to order. We have a quorum. Our entire board team is here. I'm going to read our agenda, I mean, our introduction script, which is, "Good evening. My name is Taylor Kingman. I'm president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District. I would like to welcome all of you who are at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone who is present and who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room prior to the start of tonight's meeting, should you want to offer public comment." Since no one has signed up for public comment, I'm going to skip the rules at the moment. But I do ask that everyone please refrain from talking or speaking to others while we're having our meeting. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. Now, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We're now going to move forward with our agenda, and our first on our agenda tonight is recognition of Molly Turk, Executive Director of Communications.
So, are we making her come up?
We're making, we're making the Turks.
We're a little confused on how we're supposed to do this, Molly, because you're the one that's usually up here. So, if you, and TJ, hey, let's let everyone come up.
Bring Jack, yeah.
Yeah, TJ and Jack and... Oh, no, it's perfect. So, I'm going to start us off, and then Dr. Moran's going to be more eloquent, I'm sure. Molly, we just wanted, as a board, to thank you for your time here at SAISD. You have truly set a benchmark for an executive director in communications for our board and for our district, which we did not have. And you've set a very high standard for whoever is behind you to follow you, and so we appreciate everything that you have done to get us there.
And Molly, I'd like to say I've had the pleasure of serving SAISD with you for five months. I've worked with thousands of individuals in my career, and few rise to the level of professionalism and work ethic as you do. I found you to be capable, poised, thorough, professional, and joyful every day. I know there were days you dealt with difficult situations, and you demonstrated all of these attributes that I just mentioned every time, every day. And so, we send you with our blessing. We'll dearly miss you in San Angelo ISD, and thank you, Mr. Turk, and your son, Jack, for joining us tonight, because we want to honor Molly for the enduring love that she has had for our schools and for her faithful service, and it is an honor to have worked with you. So, thank you, Molly Turk.
You're the only one that makes Dr. Moran look short up there, TJ.
You're going the wrong way.
I'm going the wrong way.
We are going to continue moving forward with our agenda. Next is public comment. No one has signed up for public comments. We're going to move forward to item five, which is conduct our finance and audit committee workshop. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Dindel for that.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. It will be fairly short tonight. We have a few reports, and also, just as a matter of reference, all of the monthly financial reports are not ready yet, so we'll review those in our July meeting and just in addition to June. So, we start out tonight with a management oversight presentation on safety, security, and compliance, and Mr. Kalenbach's going to help us with that.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the board, this is the annual review of safety and security. My last one, incidentally, since the reorganization, Scott and the safety and security team will be moving under Dr. Brandon, so this, but this is the annual one, so we'll wrap it all up for what we've accomplished in the last two years. Some of the stuff that we've done was in progress prior to me coming in two years ago, so I just wanted to show you where we're at right now, so that you have an idea of everything that's been accomplished. Just a quick reminder that at that time was right after Uvalde, so that was when things really amped up. The governor put in a whole bunch of new protocols that had to be followed, and so there's been a lot of work. Just a real quick rundown, the command-level collaboration, those are planning meetings that we have on a regular schedule, that's with the command-level people from all of those organizations, so pretty much the chiefs of all of the, all of those organizations, and then typically, safety officers that go with those as well. That has really helped us kind of stay aligned in, so everyone, every organization that deals with any kind of safety incident, they're, they're involved in those, not just to plan for the future, but also any kind of after-action reviews of any big incidents that happen. So, then, the district's safety communication protocol, that was a bunch of work that we did to align. That's when we started getting an internal system kind of beefed up in terms of making the communication quicker between us and all of those organizations, us internally as well, and then communications to you also as a board when something is going on. It includes the safety website page, where we started moving people off of social media to get what, news, to get the truth of what was happening as much as we could share at the time. We've seen a dramatic improvement in apparent responses to our safety incidents that happened. So, and Molly, the team here, the cabinet team, in terms of the protocols for who goes where and who does what and who communicates with who, it's much improved since, since that time. The internal intruder access, that's, was mandated by the governor for us to monitor the doors on a regular basis to make sure that no one can get into our campuses, and that we have the documentation for for the last two years, which is pretty robust in terms of the fact that we have all of our external doors to the campuses locked all the time. Also, we have a classroom door policy. Incidentally, this year, we had, I couldn't even tell you, thousands and thousands of door checks, and in, in terms of classroom doors, we only had two classroom doors that were unlocked all year, and that's tens of thousands of door checks. So, that's a really good thing for us, that we've, we've developed habits in our, in our district of keeping those classroom doors, which is one of the things that keeps us the safest. So, school resource officer program enhancement, a year and a half ago, we, two years ago, we upped the pay, allowing us to hire more school resource officers and get them into our elementary schools. That continues to this day in terms of, there is a school resource officer at every school for at least some time, including our elementaries, that that's something that has changed dramatically in the last couple of years. We also implemented a district-wide training for all staff that is done from the district level, so we ensure that all of our staff is trained, the same training, same common language, all of that is the same. Prior to that, we used to do all of our own at our campuses, which was okay, but this way, we can ensure that everyone hears the same message. And then, we added the safety and security coordinator as well. So, last, just the infrastructure things in terms of safety, the controlled access, that has been ongoing and is wrapping up, getting completely done, so that we have the ID badges and everything in place for that, the door policies, and then our procedures and policies for maintenance and work orders for doors when they are broken, so we get that within 24 hours. The fencing, there's been a lot of fencing that has gone up, including all of Lakeview. The silent alert technology, we added a cybersecurity specialist in Sharlin's department that, and wow, he sees everything, like, everything that we're doing as well, which is fantastic, because it is, it is not, I mean, it's difficult when you have someone on staff, but that is a huge threat, is the cybersecurity. We, we sat through a presentation of a district that got hacked last summer, and their entire district was down for 30 days, complete, no data, no, nothing working because of it. And so, that's a big thing for us, to have monitoring, to make sure that nothing is on our system that shouldn't be there, that no one is able to gain access to our system. And then, the light-speed internal monitoring is where we're monitoring all the use of our devices for concerning things, and a lot of that comes, we get quite a few alerts of things that our counselors and principals then, you know, reach out to the students and make sure that they're okay. A lot of times, those are more mental health involved that we get from those. So, that's just kind of a real quick overview of the last couple of years and where we are currently with safety and security. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kalenbach?
I was just going to make a comment, that a lot of work went into this, Mr. Kalenbach, and I appreciate this, and I've heard a lot of feedback from parents in the community that they notice, and they do feel that our schools are night and day safer than they were. So, I just wanted to pass that along to you, that they do see that and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Additional comment?
I just have a quick question. You said, who is it being transferred to going forward?
So, Scott Walters is our coordinator for safety and security, is just moving under Dr. Brandon.
Okay. But yes, thank you for doing this for the last couple of years.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kalenbach, again, we ask every time that we, have there been any events, and when the, when the answer is no for that day, it's another win for us as we, as we move forward. So, again, I know it's been several hours slash days slash months of tedious work to try to make sure that we meet a, meet the standard that we're not for sure what it is, other than it needs to be high priority for us, and I know you make it a high priority, so thank you very much for that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, before you go away, Mr. Kalenbach, I just need a shake of heads on the summary of findings of TEA intrusion.
Yes.
Detection audit.
Yeah. So, we're, we're all good again.
Okay.
So, all of our schools were audited this year.
Good. Incidents, no?
No, none on the last several. So, yeah, we're good on those.
Great. Another win for SAISD. Thank you very much.
Yes, for sure.
I appreciate that, Molly. And then, the last report, it may be now or later, but we're going to get a, go ahead and get a construction update from Ms. Henry.
Thank you all for having me tonight. We'll go ahead and jump right into this. First school we're going to talk about is McGill Elementary. These are all pictures from today. Right now, the sheet rock is 80% done. Mud and tape is about 50% done in the building. Bricks are almost complete, and they're starting on the stonework. I know last time, they had finished all of the back by the cafeteria, and now, they've completed all of the side that faces McGill, and they've made the turnaround, the side. They've started on that stone area to the right and the brick right there, and then all they'll have lacking is this front piece right there. They have, they started installing all the windows today. They started with the upper-level ones, and then they're going to move around to the bottom ones, and they'll start where the brickwork has already been completed. Here's a picture of the sheet rock there on the right. You can see where they've started framing out the front office, and that's where the countertops will be. Moving on to Fannin, currently, they're pulling wire throughout the building. They have all of the door frames installed. They're pulling Cat 5 and Internet cable throughout the building, and the skylights have been installed. Right here, you can see that they've done the backside. This is the wall that's between the multipurpose building and the new construction, and they've done all of that on the right side, and then the, on the left one is the front side that faces the street, and they're start, they were starting on that today. They have all of the windows installed in all of the classrooms. And then, here's a picture of all of the electrical that they have going on. You can see all of the Internet stuff on the right there. Dirt work continues. Today, they were prepping for the play court that's going to be added out in front of the campus. Moving on to the SUSEA building, the framing is moving real fast. This one, this one needs to move fast, and it's moving as fast as it needs to. All of the HVAC is in town. That was probably our last critical piece to receive, and it's here in town waiting to be installed once they get the crane ready. The bathroom roughing is complete, and framing this morning was complete on about three of the classrooms. Are there any questions on any of those?
As far as you can tell, Ms. Henry, are we on time for Fannin and CF, and Central and December for McGill?
Yes, as far as we could tell, they are.
It's good to hear. Any questions?
What is the move-in date for Fannin?
For Fannin? We're shooting for early August.
Is that before or after we start school? I'm just kidding.
Hopefully, before.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Henry. Again, all the other financial reports are on hold because of the early date for meeting in, in June, and so that concludes all the reports that I have, Dr. Kingman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda. We have two action items on our agenda this evening. First is bid number 24-009, CHS Portable Building Site Work. Mr. Henry, you're back up.
After the district's evaluation of campuses, it was decided that the closure of Central Oaks would not only increase student classroom time, but also decrease transportation and maintenance costs. To accomplish this increase in students at Central High School, it was determined that we would need to move four portable buildings to the central, to the west side of the campus. This would add eight total classrooms. To prepare for this, the move, to prepare for the move, the site will require extensive site work. That will include dirt work, leveling, plumbing, sidewalks, and a new fire hydrant. Specifications and plans were developed by SKG Engineering, and two bids were received from companies who perform this type of work. The administration recommends approval to split the site work and the plumbing for this project. Good construction will be awarded all of the site work, and ONIX will be awarded the plumbing portion. Total combined cost is $202,400, and $10,000 owner contingency will be added to both projects for a grand total of $222,400. Are there any questions?
Ms. Henry, the only question I have is that's $10,000 per contractor to get to 222?
Correct.
Okay.
It's on the west side of the campus. If you are standing at Sarah Barnhart and looking back towards the neighborhood, there's a parking lot, and then there's an empty, grassy...
Where that house was that originally? The whole house, it just got torn down?
Not the one that we recently bought, but yeah, there used to be a house there years ago. I think all that land was purchased during the '08 bond, and then everything was leveled off of it.
And just as a reminder, the actual portable buildings we are using are portable buildings that Mr. Candy and his crew have refurbished, correct?
Correct. There were already four buildings owned within the district at four different sites that we're going to have moved to one.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Henry? All right, do I have a motion regarding bid number 24-009 for the portable building site work?
Move for approval to split the site work and plumbing for this project. Good construction will be awarded, all the site work and ONIX will be awarded, the plumbing portion. Total combined cost will be $202,400 and a $10,000 owner's contingency per contractor will be added to both projects for a grand total of $222,400.
Second?
So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye. All against say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Next, we have consider facility assessment and bond planning services. This is the presentation that we received last week at our, or two weeks ago at our regular board meeting, but we hadn't gotten it until that Friday fax, so put it on this meeting for an actual vote. Does anyone have any question, or do you have anything you need to say? No, you're good. Any questions for Park Hill or Mr. Wolf before we entertain a motion? All right, that, then I'll ask for a motion regarding the facility assessment and bond planning services.
Dr. Kingman, I'd recommend approving Park Hill's professional services task order amendment up to a maximum amount of $532, $532,540 as presented at, at the June 3rd board meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any other board questions? All in favor, say aye. All against say the same. All right, motion passes 7-0.
Dr. King, before we move on, we've done some significant work with Park Hill over the past two to three years. Appreciate their partnership, and moving forward, look forward to this to help us with the updates that we need to see in our, on our building. So, thank you very much, Mr. Wolf, for, for your continued service and help to the district.
All right. So, now, we're going to move through with our proposed agenda for June 17th, so two weeks from now. We have an invocation, pledge allegiance, recognitions. We'll have our minutes from May 13th and 20th, public comment. All right, so we have, we'll have a construction update, where we'll have pictures that are much further along, because it'll be two weeks, and then we'll have public notice. Mrs. Ton, we need to do that publicly next, or in two weeks anyway. You're, and you, I know this is kind of a thing we do every year, and I know there's some great values that we're getting through the ESSA this year, but does anyone need any presentation on that this evening, considering we have to do it? It was in our agenda, but we need to do it publicly next week.
Anything unusual?
Yeah.
We should...
No, sir, other than just a slight decrease in Title I.
So, the, just to repeat, since Ms. Ton wasn't at the mic, the only change is there's a slight decrease in Title I funding the, next year, but otherwise, it's a fairly standard.
Okay, good.
Compared to previous, and we'll get a whole presentation on that next week, if that's okay with you. Perfect. Thank you. Sorry I made you walk up here for that. I was reiterating, so you didn't have to walk up. All right. So, then, we'll have donations. We're going to have bid 24-006. Mr. Henry, you want to tell us about that tonight, so we make a consent?
Each year, the district purchases between 450 and 500 Letterman's jackets for students in many different organizations. This bid provides vendors to make those purchases. We had four vendors respond. The contract period is from July 1, 2024, to June 30 of 2025. This also includes two one-year extensions. The administration recommends awarding primary status to SSR and secondary status to Balfour. Any questions?
Is SSR out here as well?
No, SSR is located in Dallas. They're the company that we have bought our jackets from for the last three years. They do a really good job. They, they come and do all the measuring and everything, and they also provide a, a really good jacket for probably the cheapest price we'll ever get.
And the secondary is Balfour, you said?
Correct, and they are here in town.
Yeah.
And just, sorry, on the scoring sheet, just to make sure for clarity, Monk Holdings SSA jackets is the same as SSR?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a fat finger, Miss...
Just since we're going to...
Yes, it should be SSR.
SSR jacket, just so I, so it is SS, for our motion, is SSR?
Correct.
Okay, that's, and the, one of the big things I know that you looked at, and just for parents, if we get questions later, is this, they have a very clear pricing, and why we've used them is that there are less surprise add-ons for our parents and children and students when they go to order their letter jacket.
Yes, and these prices are all locked in and do not increase for the life of this bid.
Perfect. All right, so I'm okay with that being consent. Does anyone have any questions regarding that?
I saw, does the secondary mean like they do the patches? Is that what you're talking about, or...
If, if for some reason SSR couldn't provide the product that we needed and the timeframe we needed, then it gives the organization the opportunity to go to a second vendor.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
The, so we'll make that, item H will become consent, Jessica. Next is consider performance appraisal evaluation for teachers' DNA, and that is on page 37. And this is part of our teacher allotment, incentive allotment designation. Maybe just since that's something new, have Dr. Gomez present that next week?
We can do that. This basically provides a foundation for, for us to use the teacher incentive allotment coming up this year, and we're happy to present that.
I know, it's mostly just a change in our local policy.
That's right.
It's not a, but I think just because this is a new thing, the more times we can say it out loud is probably a good thing, unless someone, unless there's a reason to put it on consent, like Dr. Gomez doesn't want to talk.
We're happy to present.
Okay, let's just do that. And maybe just that way, we can explain what we're doing. So, then, the next, so that'll stay regular, Jessica. Then, we'll consider delegate and alternate delegate for the TASB convention. We have previously, Mrs. Mizal Flynn has been our delegate, and Mr. Gallegos has been our alternate, and we have kept that in the form, but we haven't talked to anyone, I don't think. Does, is any board comment on whether or not...
Consent.
It was for sure consent, but is anyone who wants to be the board, the delegate, or Gerard's not going to have a headache, I mean, a heart attack... or Gerard's not gonna have a headache, I mean, a heart attack this year, so we can have him be our...
Good.
Okay, so good with keeping that the same?
Dr. Kingman, they've both done a fine job and represented the district well in the past, and so I would certainly commend them for their efforts in that Saturday afternoon session. Would certainly be encouraged if they continue to do that.
I think that's, I think that is perfect, so we appreciate both of y'all and your selflessness in taking the delegates, so we, or the, being the delegate, so we'll make that consent, and then, support. And then, we need to review board operating procedures and standards. Really, there was one change, just to match our local policy regarding public comment, and then it's just the time of year where we review our board operating procedures. Anyone have a comment? Dr. Moran, do you have anything you need to present on that?
No, it's by law, we should annually review and approve the board operating procedures. We found one error in the procedures that we are going to correct, but outside of that, it appears that everything else is fine, but between now and then, if a board member finds something, then obviously, we can make the adjustment on the 17th.
All right, I'm okay with that being consent. If anyone else is, great, okay. So, we have announcements. We got Team of Eight training, and June 24th, we got our meeting, obviously, on the June 17th, and then July, our meetings will be on July 15th and July 22nd. From a, we do need to go into executive session for just a quick moment. We're gonna go under 551.074 Personnel Matters and 551.072 Real Property. We'll be right back. We have returned from executive session. We took no action, we took no votes, and with that, we are back from executive session, and now, meeting adjourned.